All right, good evening. I'd like to call the June 21st, 2021 meeting in the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Smiley for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll have a moment of silence. Please. Now, will you show us the flag?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to request that the council consider the addition of a closed session, and the city attorney at the time will have a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as revised with the closed session.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Connolly, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were scheduled to be the subject of a public interdictive at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. The total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who had registered with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who had registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers tonight for public comment, and I am looking in the public inbox, and we have not received any comments for public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period and move right on to old business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Here we go. Thank you, Mayor. I'm good?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. The first item is the council's consideration of an ordinance requested by Happy Trails Farms LLC to rezone 17.2 acres located along the eastern right-of-way of Port Terminal Road and 350 feet north of East 10th Street from R6A to R6.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were submitted during the 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir. We did not receive any comments during that period. Any comments received afterwards were still forwarded to the mayor and council.
Thank you very much. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
I have a question and a comment.
Councilmember Smiley.
Madam Manager, would you tell us one more time what the staff recommendation was for this? Or Shante, the planner?
Hold on. Yes, Councilmember Smiley, I will pull out that item.
Staff recommended denial.
Okay. Thank you. And so, I don't want to go back into everything we talked about last time, but, you know, the applicant has acknowledged that it's a marginal piece of land with a lot of delicate environmental concerns. He has previously acknowledged to this council he can make money on the current zoning, and now he's asking for a more intense zoning so that he can make more money. And I don't know that we're obligated to support that, to give him, you know, a greater ability to damage the environment so that he can further enhance his profits. So, I would just encourage people to vote against the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Glover?
That's it. Okay. Thank you. Yes. For this zoning, last week, okay, it looks like the P&amp;Z Board voted for it, right? And did the staff do? I thought the staff had approved it as well. I'm not sure.
No, ma'am. Mayor Protem, the staff recommendation was to deny.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, if no one else is going to do it, then I move we follow the staff recommendation and deny the request.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion or a call for the vote? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Nay.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Nay.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Nay.
Nay.
Question fails. Mayor Connolly, four to two.
All right.
I'd like to move to approve the item.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by, sorry, by Councilmember, actually, Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Sorry, could you repeat that one one more time?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Nay.
Okay. Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor. Four to two.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is an ordinance requested by the city of Greenville to rezone 5.2345 acres located between East 1st Street and the Tar River, roughly between North Green Street and Baker Street from OR and R6 to CD.
All right. Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made or submitted during the 24-hour statutory period after the hearing?
No, sir. There were no comments that were made during that 24-hour period. Any comments that were received, though, afterwards were forwarded out to the mayor and council.
Thank you very much. Any open for board discussion or motion?
So, I think that I can do this. The attorney can tell me if I need to make a different motion, but my move that rather than approving this rezoning, that council directs staff to do two things. First, to develop a parks commercial zone classification, which would principally have the uses envisioned in the Town Common Master Plan as permitted uses. And to bring back a, bring back an ordinance to rezone only 1.4 acres of this parcel that we anticipate active development on, to be rezoned to that new zoning when it is available.
Is that close enough, Emmanuel? Or do you need more?
Yeah, this is a legislative decision, so council has the prerogative to refer the matter back to create a new parks district. If this matter, if the, if the council member's motion was seconded, it could be referred back to staff to do as suggested.
Now, we second that.
Mayor, is this discussion? Yeah, yeah. The motion's been made, and Councilmember Daniels has just seconded it, and then I'll open it up for discussion. All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. Before I call the vote, is there any other additional discussion on this item? Councilmember?
Mayor?
Yep.
The Town Common Master Plan is a plan that was approved by previous councils, and I am in support of rezoning just the smaller portion, which we would, which we have identified as the part that would be developable. We received quite a few emails, you know, from individuals and people in the community, and it seems that there is a misconception about what's actually going to be on the property. And I think it's important to remember that the city is going to continue to own this property. It's going to be, continue to be for public use. It's a wonderful opportunity to have some event space, an ice cream shop, kayak rentals. You know, again, it seems that there are one or two, or maybe even more than that, individuals in the community that are providing misinformation about what's going on down there, or it's going to be developed into, you know, some huge metropolis, and it's just not true. And it's frustrating to see past council members or individuals in the community spreading that misinformation. So, I am in favor of rezoning the 1.4 acres that we've identified as being developable. I'm not in favor of creating a whole new rezoning for a park, and asking staff to go back and do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mayor? I'll defer to it.
Hold on a second. Councilmembers beat you to it.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
Is it me now?
Yes, it's you.
Okay. I would just like to say, you know, we have all received several emails. A portion, a large portion of those emails have come from those who have lived on the Town Common, who've lived in that area, who own stores and different things like that. And the Town Common has had a restructure. I do know that when some of the past council members made the decisions that they did, it was a different time. It was a different space at the Town Common. We do have a lot of empty spaces in Greenville that we could probably utilize very close to the Town Common. And I think, you know, I've been wondering lately, when my grandparents and others lived at the Town Common, if this same discussion was had. And I think for those individuals that were there and who do have an issue with this, that has to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I get some of the concerns, and, you know, if it was up to me, I mean, I trust the city's staff. I'd be fine with approving the request from the city's staff as is, but in the spirit of compromise, I'm happy to reduce that number to the 1.4 acres that Councilmember Smiley mentioned. I just, I understand that, you know, past success isn't, you know, a guarantee of future success, but for me, this is a request by the city's staff. The city's staff will be managing this. The city's staff, in my opinion, has done a good job of executing the Town Common Master Plan. Maybe others disagree, but in my opinion, the city's staff has done a great job with the kids' park. The city's staff has done a very good job with the bathrooms, I think, that were put on the Town Common. I think the city's staff did a great job navigating the Sycamore Hill Church Memorial. I mean, if somebody disagrees with that, I'd be surprised. I think all of those projects have been managed by the city's staff, really. They've done a fantastic job. I don't anticipate them handling this next step any different. I have faith in the city's staff, so I'm on board with reducing it if that makes people feel better, and I think we should trust the city's staff to do a good job moving forward again with the request for the zoning that they made.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Mayor?
You can go ahead to the Mayor Protem.
All right. Mayor Protem Glover?
I am in agreement with the 1.4 acres, but as we have always said, and I think I said some of the things that Councilmember Daniels said last night, we have to keep in mind the people from the, that actually live in that, in that area. They didn't have a choice whether to leave or not. They were told to leave, so they didn't have a choice. The church didn't have a choice to leave because they wouldn't sell and it was burned down. So, I think we should always keep Sycamore Hill and the people, the citizens that live down on that river in mind when we make decisions. So, I think to reduce it, the amount would be a good thing.
All right.
Since we do have kayak and all that, and, excuse me, I didn't, since we do have the kayak and all of that, we do need places to store the kayaks so that they're, they're more neater and not seen when you go to the park unless they're being used. So, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to, you know, echo some of the comments I've heard, you know. I think that some of the positives of, you know, the Town Common Master Plan that we've implemented so far are that they've brought exactly, you know, brought light to, you know, the history of the Town Common and the neighborhood that was there, and I think that, you know, city staff has done a great job of bringing more attention to Town Common. You know, Sycamore, Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza has done a great job of, you know, highlighting the history of that piece of property, but also, you know, the bathrooms, the park, the planned improvements to the amphitheater, the fishing pier, the kayak launch, those have all gone to serve the citizens of the city of Greenville, and I think that, you know, if we move forward with this, it'll continue to do that. And so, I would like to offer a substitute motion that would strike through the previous motion as far as the part about a specific park zoning. I would like to shrink the rezoning request to the 1.46 acres that staff has outlined that they need, and would like to move forward with that motion.
All right. I believe, do we need Councilmember Smiley? Do you have to approve this?
Well, he made it as a substitute motion, not as a friendly amendment, so he just, we need a second.
All right. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All right. So, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Litchfield for subsequent motion. Any other discussion?
I do.
Councilmember Smiley?
I think it's important to actually, to, the part that's being removed from my motion, I think, is actually quite important, that if we were to make it quite clear to the public what the limits of our intentions are, right? Zoning this to CD, you know, whether or not we intend to do it or not, you know, is a, you know, is an overly broad choice, right? It's convenient because there's CD nearby, but it includes all sorts of things which we do not intend to do, and there is a substantial amount of concern in the public that some of those things are, in fact, our intentions. I don't know why we would decline to make our intentions more clear by creating a zoning that matches those intentions, and I think it would be reassuring to the people who are object, who are asking us to vote against this, to let them know is that we want to zone this in a way which only include, which only has the things that are in the Town Common Master Plan. It also, I don't know that we're in a rush, you know. There's certainly no, no reason that another two or three months it takes to actually get the zoning right is going to slow down any of our plans there, but it does serve, I think, it would serve to reassure a number of people whose support we ultimately want that this is what our intentions are. I fear that this action, as currently proposed, to rezone it CD in spite of extraordinary objection to that, risk telling a large collection of the population that we will need ultimately to be supportive of this, that we are not interested, that we are not interested in their objections. So, you know, I just encourage us to put, to take a step, take a step back, give the public three or four months to like, you know, get on, get to understand what we're doing. Make it clear in black and white that this is our, that our intentions do not involve the large hotels and convention centers that, you know, the CD zoning would seem to support, and, and move forward in that way. I don't understand, I don't, I haven't heard a good argument why we wouldn't do that. Maybe a bad, maybe a good, maybe a good argument, some bad face. I'd like to hear, you know, maybe Councilman Bell and Councilman Litchfield that are speaking to this, why they are, why they feel we need to move so quickly.
Before either of them comment, I just want to ask the city manager to, is it the intention of the city's staff to be able to, no matter what direction this goes, if it does move forward with the rezoning requests, is public engagement is extremely important? Is that something the city's staff is prepared to do for this process since this is city-owned land that would be potentially rezoned to a higher density?
Mayor, we would believe that public engagement, just as the council believes, public engagement is important, including a publicly vetted request for, a publicly vetted review of any proposal that we would receive for it. We would have a, as we've done in other processes, would develop a proposal and would take proposal, a request for proposal, and then would take proposals from developers, so developers or anybody else could come and talk to us about potential uses for that space. So, yes, public engagement would be very important to that process.
It would be safe to say that it would probably be a similar type of engagement as the inclusive playground and the Sycamore Hill Gateway project that took place, which took several months of public outreach to be able to develop a schematic design for each of those.
Right, and as you'll recall with Sycamore Hill, we even created an advisory group because having that public input was so important on that project. We had an advisory group that really advised us every step of the way with Sycamore Hill. We have not yet, we have not yet designed the public engagement process for this, for this project, but certainly a public engagement process will be very important.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments?
Yeah.
Councilmember Daniels?
I'd just like to say, I think it's important, too, for those things to be done because a major part of our conversation appears to be what past councils have done, and we want to assure the public that future councils won't run into this same situation. You know, they need to know what fully to expect from us now and in the very near future.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I continue to hope somebody will give me a sense of why we're, why we're in such a hurry. I mean, why or not, why aren't we willing to take the time to walk through, you know, to make it clear what our exact and specific plans are, rather than settling for a zoning which mischaracterizes those plans?
Any additional comments?
Mayor, I'm happy to answer that.
Councilmember Bell?
You know, as we've highlighted before, there's been numerous, numerous public input sessions related to the development of the Town Common with the Town Common Master Plan. I think staff has made it clear that there's going to be future input sessions that are quite rigorous, that are going to, you know, guide the development of that one specific parcel. And, you know, I believe that, you know, in 2010, when the conceptualization of this plan was brought forward, it would have been a proper time to address a park zoning. I think 10, now 11 years later, you know, hindsight's always 2020, but I believe 11 years ago might have been the time to address this.
So, the fact that we, so you're saying that the public hearings that were held 11 years ago are sufficient to where we are? I mean, you said we've had lots of public input. Do you know when the last public input session was? We didn't have one when we, any of the last two times this has come up.
My understanding was 2016.
So, five years ago. It just seems, it seems like we're rushing for no reason, and it, I don't know why we would do that.
Any other, Councilmember Litchfield?
To address Councilmember Smiley's questions about rushing, I don't see this as a rush at all. I see it as a major compromise and actually a reduction in the amount of acreage that was going to be rezoned substantially. City manager, what's the total acreage of Town Common?
A little over 20 acres. Councilmember Litchfield?
1.4 divided 20. So, about 7%. That is 7% of Town Common, which is the northeastern corner, right on the river, is the area that we're talking about being developed. 7%. Staff has done an excellent job with the, with the current things that are on Town Common, and I don't see this as a rush at all. I have received no more than 40 emails out of a community of 100,000 people, and so, in fact, a couple of those emails have been from more, the same person multiple times, sending the same email over and over and over. Again, there's a lot of misinformation from individuals, certain individuals, and it's unfortunate that we have that. Again, 7% of the Town Common is going to be a building that's going to house kayak rentals, ice cream shops, event space, a wonderful opportunity for, to showcase our waterfront, something that we have wanted to do for such a long time. So, again, I don't see this as a rush any way, shape, or form. I see it as a wonderful compromise, going from five-plus acres down to 1.4 acres, and again, it's 7% of Town Common.
All right.
Another question.
Councilmember Daniels?
Is it my understanding that planning and zoning has denied this request? Was that correct?
Councilmember Daniels, the staffer supported this request and made a recommendation for approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission did deny their request.
Okay.
Sorry? Any other questions?
The denial was for the larger area, though, right? They have not actually heard the 1.4, so.
Yes, that is correct. The Planning and Zoning Commission denied the original request, which was the 5.2345 acres.
All right. Yeah. Councilmember Bell?
I'd also like to address, you know, there's a question posed by another council member about, you know, citizen input and the amount of time, you know, 2016 was the last time that plan was updated and there was citizen input. You know, there's a couple of council members that we serve with that, you know, routinely bring the Horizons Plan into, into our conversations and debate. That plan was last updated in 2016 as well, so I believe that if we're going to, you know, work on the same concepts that five years ago is, you know, plenty recent of an update. So, thank you.
Hey, if we're willing to start operating on the precepts of the Horizons Plan, I'm all for you. But I understand, we kind of, we seem to, that doesn't seem to be our general trend. I'm, I'm going to, I'm, I am in supportive of the, the plans, which I understand to happen on the Town Common. Everything that Councilman Litchfield just laid out about the, you know, the various uses. I am, I intend to vote against the motion in its current stand, in its current form because I think it would be a, a better way for council to proceed, to create another zoning and let it, make it much more clear to the public what we are limiting ourselves to rather than using the CD zoning. Long-term, I, you know, I, as I've said many times to everybody who asks, that I like the idea of putting amenities on the Town Common. I just think that we could do it, we could do it in a more deliberate way, which reassured the, the members of the public who clearly have concerns about this. So, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just believe that with the reduced acreage, continuing to engage the public as we have done with every other project that has turned out to be great, I have, this is a request from the city's staff. We are editing their request to, I guess I'd say, give more confidence to the public in what we're doing and what the city is doing. The city has brought this request to us. I am on board with approving it with the reduction.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion before I take a vote?
I, nothing.
Speak now or forever hold your peace, Councilmember Smiley. Guess you'll hold your peace. All right. Motion, subsequent motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Nay.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number three. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is for the, is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter Four, Article U, Appendix A, Table of Uses of the City Code to add 8X Dance Studio as a permitted use in the following districts, downtown Commercial Fringe, General Commercial and Heavy Commercial, and to add 13E Parcel Delivery Service as a permitted use in the following districts, General Commercial and Neighborhood Commercial.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were submitted during the 24-hour statutory period after the public hearing was held?
No, sir. We did not receive any comments for that item.
Thank you very much. Open for board discussion or motion?
Move to approve.
All right. Motion is made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number four. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, last item isn't, or the last item for the old business is an ordinance requested by the Planning and, um, Zoning Commission amending Title IX of the City Code to be in compliance with the North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D.
All right. Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were submitted during the 24-hour statutory period, uh, after the, uh, public hearing was held?
No, sir. We did not receive any comments for this item.
Thank you very much. Open for board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
All right. Motion was made by, uh, Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. A petitioner or a representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreement verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first and only public hearing?
Uh, it's a public hearing to consider an ordinance to annex Allen Ridge, Section Three, Phases One and Two, involving 27.54 acres located at the current terminus of Allen Ridge Road. Staff Planner, Chief Planner Shante Gubey has the presentation. Ms. Gubey?
Good afternoon. Um, I'm getting a message that my connection is unstable, so I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible. So I'm going to share my screen, get to my presentation. Hopefully you can all see it. All right. Um, so this is an annexation. Uh, this property is located in the eastern section of the city. Uh, the green shows the current city limits, the red shows, um, the subject property. It will be located in voting district number two. Um, it is estimated to, uh, yield 76 duplex lots. It is in the preferred growth area. It's located in the Green Mill Run watershed, which means it will, will require 25-year detention. Again, it's just a little over 27 acres, um, at full buildout. The, um, tax, uh, estimated tax value is $22.8 million. Uh, one, um, just one change with, um, the map that came in your packet, staff realized that the surveyor had left off a required note, so that now that has been added. Other than that, there are no changes, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Gubey? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Gubey. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Conley, the first registered speaker that we have tonight is Mr. Lee Precise. Mr. Precise, um, you have 10 minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor Conley, city council members. I hope everyone can hear me. Uh, good evening, Mr. McGirt and other city staff. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening to briefly address the petition and ordinances before you. Uh, again, my name is Lee Precise. I'm with the law firm of Whiten Allen here in Greenville. I'm speaking on behalf of and as counsel for the owner of the property, ACP Holdings, LLC, which is the owner of Section Three, Phases One and Two in the Allen Ridge subdivision. Um, Ms. Gubey, I appreciate your presentation, accurately conveying the property and, uh, the end result of annexation, which is being sought from the city council. And this is a petition for contiguous annexation pursuant to, uh, North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160A, Sections 30 and 31. The property as it exists is bounded on three sides by existing city jurisdiction. Uh, site work and other development of the property has been ongoing for some time now. Uh, the developer of the property, Bella Homes LLC, and other contractors are taking part in that work. The annexation, which is before the city council, will be the next step in the process of making this location livable for city families. Uh, in terms of the benefits to the city, first and foremost, the property will yield in its finished condition, uh, an additional 150 residential units of much needed housing to the city's available stock, as Ms. Gubey pointed out, with a tax value of estimated to be approximately $22 million. Uh, we do understand that there's a public comment period, which was followed this evening's council meeting, minimum 24 hours. We would appreciate the city council taking that matter up as soon thereafter as may be allowable, and understand that could be as soon as, uh, June 23rd. And we would appreciate the council doing so as soon as possible to allow further development and other work at the property to take place. I appreciate your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that Mr. Mayor or the council members may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Precise. Any questions for Mr. Precise? So you know, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Conley, we do not have any additional speakers for this item in favor, and I've got the public input box up, and we have not received any comments in favor either.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Conley, we do not have any registered, registered speakers in opposition to this item, and I am looking in the inbox again, and we have not received any comments in opposition either.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion.
When are we voting on this?
Wednesday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM. Is that correct? Got some head nods. That's correct. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council intends to vote on this item during our recessed meeting on June 23rd at 6:00 PM. All right. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
All right. Comments from the mayor and the city council? Let's start this time with Councilmember Meyerhofer.
All set. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
All right. How about Councilmember Smiley?
No comment.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye. Um, I'd just like to, um, thank the city staff for all the hard work and dedication that they put in, um, behind the scenes for the work that we do. And I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out, um, to Greenville Grooves and Juneteenth. We had an absolutely wonderful time. Um, thank you to Assistant Manager Ken Graves and while it was just, the weather was nice, everyone, um, there was just something good in the atmosphere, and thank you all for that. Um, and have a good week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Um, I did, I didn't get to Greenville Grooves, but I did, because I had a late therapy appointment. So, um, but I did get to, um, go down for Juneteenth. And, and as, uh, Councilmember Daniels has said, it was a wonderful day for that, and the wind was blowing. Um, the, the sky was like overcast a lot, so we really had, um, some really good weather. So June, I decided to plant ourselves at the first seat that we saw that had a, had a shade tree. So it was really wonderful. I just want to, um, say to the staff, thank you all for your hard work, because I know it wasn't easy to, um, handle these two events and get everything together, but I just want to thank you all for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Glover. And I'd like to echo the same thing that, uh, Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Pro Tim Glover said. I think this last weekend was incredible. Uh, Greenville Grooves was great. I think a lot of people had an incredible time out there enjoying it. It was good to see people out there, listening to live music, talking to one another, having a good time, dancing, and it was just a good atmosphere. And then the next day with Juneteenth was, was incredible. Thank you to the city staff for everything that you did. We had an action-packed day of city events, and then there were multiple other organizations that put together events that, uh, were great. It was good to see all the people coming out to celebrate an important day, uh, for not only our community, but throughout the country. And then finally, the last thing I want to say is I want to say a happy anniversary to my wife. She has put up with me for 13 years of marriage. We talked about it the other day. I met her 17 years ago. We've been married for 13 years, and I think she is going to soon be a saint. So. With no further, uh, comments, I am going to ask for a motion to go into closed session, and I believe our attorney, Mr. McGirt, will provide that motion.
Yeah, I have that motion. And mayor and council, I have one procedural thing that's kind of bothering me. When, when we voted on the Town Common, we did, it could only be two main motions on the floor, and we amended the motion by going with Councilmember Bell's motion. But once that was amended, we should vote on the amended main motion, which is voting on the rezoning to just be 1.4 acres. So I just want to be clear that we, we vote substantively on the main motion. So I would ask you to take one more motion to, um, vote one more time on an amended main motion, reducing the size of the, um, the parcel to 1.4 acres, uh, because it should have been two steps. So I would ask you to take one more vote.
Um, isn't that what we just voted on?
Yeah, well, it could only be two main motions. It could only be one main motion on the floor at the time. Councilmember Smiley had a motion on the floor to refer the matter back and to reduce the size to 1.4 acres. And then Councilmember Bell amended that motion to say 1.4 acres rezoning. So you had to vote on whether or not you were going to accept Councilmember Bell's amendment, which you did. And now there needs to be a, a, a vote on the amended main motion, which is a, a vote to, uh, to, to rezone 1.4 acres.
Okay.
So, so Councilmember Bell's motion was accepted, so now you need to vote on that.
All right. So this would be, the previous vote was to avoid amending the motion I made, and this vote would be to, having failed to prevent that motion from being amended, the vote would now be on whether or not to accept the amended motion. Is that an adequate summary of what?
We voted to accept Councilmember Bell's amendment on the merits. But, so Councilmember Bell's motion is now the main motion, and I would ask you to vote on that one more time.
I understand.
For the 1.4?
Yep.
We were voting, we were voting whether or not my motion would take precedent over the other.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Understood.
Okay.
The mayor looks kind of...
So we, we don't need another motion. We just need to vote on, on whether or not my motion will pass. First, it took, it was a vote to take precedent, now it's a vote to, uh, to pass or fail.
Exactly.
Yeah. I understand.
All right. So I guess I'll, I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. All right. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Uh, the city manager hats are hanging up.
I'm sorry. I, I wanted to just ask a procedural question for the, the city attorney McGirt. Did, uh, does the council then need to make a motion and a second to vote on the main motion?
No. His, 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 his motion, his, his motion prevailed, so now they, they vote on Councilmember Bell's amended main motion.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
I guess I'll call the city clerk to take the votes.
Okay.
Can we get some clarification real quick, please, on exactly what we're voting on? Councilmember Bell's substitute, substitute motion? Is that what we're voting on?
Exactly. You're voting on Councilmember Bell's substitute motion, so the vote should really be the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Not necessarily. We could have objected to, any member of council could have objected to having their motion revised, but could continue, but could actually come to support the mo, the in-motion that was ultimately made, right?
That's true, too.
That's correct.
So it could be unanimous.
So, so maybe for clarification, a city attorney McGirt might want to repeat what the motion is. So the council will clear what they're voting on. Right.
The vote, the motion is the amended main motion made by, uh, Councilmember Bell to rezone 1.4 acres. That's the amended, that's the motion that's before the board. If you're in support of Councilmember Bell's motion, you would vote yes.
All right. I will now call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now, uh, call the city attorney for the motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mayor and council, for, um, giving me a little[1717.54]
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now call the city attorney for the motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me a little leeway with that procedural concern that I had. But the motion is as follows. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the city administration requests that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11, for the following reasons: to discuss two separate matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including an agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
Is that moved?
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor Conley 6-0.
Thank you very much. We're officially in closed session. I will wait for our city clerk and staff to...
Okay.
All right. Are we recording?
Yes.
I'll do the recording thing in the...
Oh, here, let me...
Recording in progress.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Welcome back. We're back from being in closed session. Before I ask for a motion to recess, I do want to mention one thing that I almost forgot. We have somebody on our Brady Bunch screen here tonight. One of the guys that's kind of right behind the scenes all the time, doesn't always get out in front, but we know how special he is to our community and how much work he does for the city staff. Mr. Ken Graves is celebrating a birthday today, so I want you to give him a...
Woo-hoo!
...a happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Ken!
Happy birthday, Ken!
Happy birthday, Mr. Graves!
Should we sing happy birthday to you?
I want that for me.
I think it's only appropriate that his boss sings happy birthday.
(laughing)
I like that.
There you go, Ann. There you go.
Strategically unmute right now. Well, when we get back in August, we'll hold that to you, so...
Okay. I'll look forward to that.
All right. Without further ado, I will need a motion to recess until June 23, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. to vote on the public hearing that was heard tonight.
That moved.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Conley, 6-0.
Thank you very much. We are officially recessed. I will see everybody back here on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, June 20...